That we will lose those funds if they're not used by the end of the fiscal, state fiscal year.
Correct me if I'm wrong, Megan. We contacted Frankfurt and they said that was fine, correct?
I'm pretty sure we did contact them. That's what they told us.
Let's make another call.
Yeah.
Maybe do a backup call. Yeah.
Given the state of things too, Jennifer, I can't imagine any deadlines that of course WordPress are going to be moved because everything is shut down.
Yeah, but I'm afraid they'll take that money and put it in their COVID fund.
They're not.
And this is, and this is a new governor. It's not the governor that promised that money to us. Yeah.
We won't give it back. Let them come take it from us.
Well, we haven't got it, so.
Yeah, we got it first.
We don't get it until we do the job.
Yeah, we'll get it. We'll get it. I'm not worried about that. But nevertheless, it doesn't hurt to check.
Any more on that, counsel?
So when do you, when do you propose then that you'll be able to bid it? Do you have a goal? When to put it out for bid?
Tennessee signs the EASM agreement this month, I think we can get it out and probably a lot of people are sitting in front of this this month.
So is the, is the bid proposal, has the bid proposal already been prepared?
That's, yeah, primarily art. That's going to be his job. And then we'll put it together to make the, put it in paper.
Give us some feedback. Can everybody turn their, can everybody turn their media on unless you're with the council?
Yeah, mine's going back and forth too.
Oh, business Todd, you want to talk about the code enforcement salary?
Yes. Uh, this will go back to the ordinance prior to me being on council. It was two six eight twenty nineteen. I don't have the full, uh, ordinance in front of me. Uh, this is what I'm going to propose. I'd like to propose and to make a motion to amend the ordinance to change the wording regards to the annual compensation. A would be change the wording from the current sixteen thousand five hundred annual compensation. And change the wording of that to the annual compensation of the city code enforcement officer shall be set during the city budget process on the current needs of the city. Code enforcement officers should be paid an hourly salary for hours work. The salary should be paid for hours technically worked at a rate not to exceed thirteen fifty an hour. The code enforcement position is a part-time position without benefits and cannot exceed ninety-nine hours a month. Eleven hundred and eighty-eight hours per year. Now, if you take the sixteen five divided by, uh, what was it? Fifty-two weeks or no, divided by twelve, divided by ninety-nine hours a week, you come up with thirteen fifty.
Alex, can we legally change that man's salary in midstream?
Well, you fired him. I mean, the mayor has the ability to do what he needs to do. And then you give him time. So, I mean, he's, he's on a contract. I mean, he's on a employment at will basis. I mean, if there's no need for him, then you can adjust it or you can increase it depending on.
How, how do you?
You can amend.
My concern is, uh, the hours work compared to, uh, just a lump sum. Hey, I'm getting a thousand, we're going to choose numbers, thousand dollars a month. Whether I show up or not, as long as I'm there for two hours a month, I'm still getting the full thousand dollars.
My question is, like with Paula, Alex, I don't have a problem with changing, you know, you guys changing that, but Alex legally. This is not, this is something that we have to be very careful with. If we change his salary to hourly instead of salary in midstream while he's still working for us. How, how?
I don't think we're proposing that we change his salary. I think what Todd is proposing is that we amend this ordinance. So whatever you do about the salary is whatever you do. We are, what Todd is proposing is to change the ordinance.
Are you talking about for future, future employers that apply to that job?
Yeah, that's, uh, we'll leave that on your interpretation. But I think it's a good, uh, it's a good plan to change that. I've had several people in these comments ask why we're paying someone a salary position and not, um, not hourly. So.
Counsel voted on that. That's an easy answer.
That's why we made a mistake and that's why we're wanting to amend it. And I'm sure.
It's, it's fine with me.
And I'm sure when we're ready to give him a pay raise, that we could do it the same way. We make an amendment and give him a pay raise. In midstream and do that as well.
I say if he steps down as code enforcement officer, not even have one until we, we legally have something that we can, we can deal with with the people. There's, there's no sense in paying.
I think we're in agreement with that.
Especially since the new ones didn't get passed. We don't need to have a salary nuisance code enforcement officer.
Going between what Alex said and what the mayor just said, he is an at-will employee. If we don't have anything for him to work with, now might not be the time to have the employee.
Correct me if I'm wrong, Todd. We still, or Alex, we still have an ordinance in place. We still have a nuisance ordinance.
That's why we want to amend it.
Of the ordinance, not for salary, but the ordinance for the nuisance. We've always had one since Jim Livingston and, and council passed that.
Uh, did you, did you make a motion, Todd?
I'm making a motion to change the wording.
I would second the motion.
Todd, you want to, just for my, for clarification, you actually want to amend the ordinance. You want to repeal the ordinance, just then and draft another ordinance, don't you?
Uh, all I need, all I need to accomplish is amend sixteen thousand five hundred annual compensation, which is how it's wrote now, to an hours work.
Right. It's, yeah, you're changing it. So, so Megan, I believe that's an ordinance that he's referring to, is he not?
Yes.
Yeah. So we have to repeal that ordinance and then you would have to draft another ordinance, have a first and second reading. It's an ordinance.
Alex, I thought in the past, sir, you said that we can amend it and only if we want.
You're, you are, but you're changing the substance of it considerably. You're, you're taking it from a salary position to an hourly position. So I, it requires, I'm, you know, I mean, my advice would be draft a new ordinance. So repeal this ordinance and, and change the ordinance.
Can we, can we go ahead and just have a vote if this is what council wants to do so that we won't waste your time to draw up an ordinance? If it's not what the council wants to do?
I mean, I'm hearing, I'm hearing consensus across the board, right? I mean, from what I heard, everybody's in agreement that if you, if we don't have a nuisance board, a code enforcement board and all the different particulars, a chief or nuisance officer, then the mayor through the existing employees can accomplish what is on the books at least as it pertains to nuisances now. And that's what I've heard. Um, I don't think anyone disputes that. Now, if we adopt a new nuisance code that requires a code enforcement board and a hearing officer and a citation officer, then you may want to look at it and revisit it. But the question is, is it, do you decide as a mayor, does it, does it make sense to just go ahead and terminate employment based upon that will? Because there's just simply no need at this point because the ordinance fails a matter of course. And then if you rehire, you can examine at that point. That's probably the most effective way to, to accomplish what you're trying to do.
First of all, can he come back on the city, Alex?
For, I mean, no. I mean, the issue for me and, and stresses that is that the position he has is at will. And if there's no need in the present context, because there, you know, we were all anticipating there would be a code enforcement ordinance passed. Of course, we started working on that when Wanda was here and we endeavored to that goal. We didn't reach that. And so the consensus at least from the council is that that's not necessary at this time for whatever reasons. So if that's the case, then a code enforcement officer, even on the basis of what you want, which is a salary position is necessary.
So then I, I will change what I'm proposing then to either change the wording or terminate the position. I didn't think council could do that, but I'll, I'll leave that up to the other five.
Well, I think, I think what he said was repeal the ordinance. That's what we can do.
And then you take it out of the budgets as well, right? I mean, so amend the budget, it's removed, there's no more funding for it. The position is effectively, is, is now canceled.
Guys, I don't, I don't know, um, what you're hearing in your neighborhoods, but my neighborhood needs a nuisance ordinance officer. People are tired of looking at tires and, um, garbage and pallets and, um, tires thrown at stop signs. We need a nuisance officer. We need a nuisance ordinance.
Um, I, I want to remind everybody that every subdivision can go ahead and have a, oh goodness gracious, what am I going to try to say? A neighborhood rule. Help me out.
HOA. No, you cannot do that, Danny. You can't, you can't form a HOA after the development.
But I'm committed, based upon what I'm hearing tonight. I mean, if you all want to have special meetings and really reach a consensus on what it looks like, I mean, there's no part of office ship of the ordinance. It, it was voted down. There wasn't enough support to pass it. So therefore, if there is genuine interest in trying to advance at least some, some agenda as it pertains to nuisance, then we look at it. It's okay. Things happen. I mean, everybody's put a lot of work into it. Even the people that, that didn't like it, there's nothing wrong with that. That's, that's democracy. The goal for us now is to, if you all still believe there's a need for some amendments for changes to what's on the books now, which, you know, based upon what Wanda, I haven't had any real discussions with the current code enforcement officer, but certainly with Wanda, we were running into lots of challenges. A lot of due process challenges, a lot of problems, a lot of things that are going to make people really upset inside. So we're trying to fix some of it. So you guys just give the direction. Now hopefully we can resume these meetings sometime midsummer where we can meet in person and really start having a good dialogue. But it's going to require a lot of, a lot of attention, not unlike what we've done in the past. So, so, you know, hearing what you all are proposing tonight, the goal would be is if, if there really isn't a practical need for a true code enforcement officer, then, then the resources don't need to be spent in that direction.
So does the, so what does the motion need to be, Alex? Does it mean, what, what I, what I think Todd was saying and what this entire, or most of the council has been against this whole time is this position being a salary position. I don't think any of us are completely against a nuisance ordinance or a nuisance or a code enforcement officer. We just don't. We, we would rather the code enforcement officer be paid hourly and we would rather the nuisance ordinance just be amended and just start over and be cut way down.
Sure.
So, so what do we need to do? Do we need to, about this ordinance that we have in place that says we pay a new, uh, and, enforcement officer sixteen five?
I'm sorry, you're, I'm, I'm jumping ahead of you talking. Um, so I think that you have, you have a budget process coming up, right? And your budget's coming up now. Effectively, you're, tonight I think is the first reading of the budget, right? The proposed budget. So by the next, uh, budget, by the next meeting, you'll be voting on, on your budget. And I think that if you decide at that point in time, it doesn't make a whole lot of sense to have that in the budget, you eliminate from the budget. Then there is no position.
But, but, well, we've had this argument over, um, ABC officer, that there is a, an ordinance in place that says we pay the ABC or, uh, officer. So we had to amend that ordinance. So I don't want to come up later and have this ordinance back in the book somewhere that says we pay him sixteen five on an annual salary when that's not what people want.
And, and you're more than welcome. Of course, it probably would make sense to go ahead and also repeal the ordinance at the same time.
Okay, that's what, that's what I was asking.
Yeah, just do it both. Make it clear.
Okay. That's what I was asking. So Todd, do you want to amend your?
I'll, I'll propose we go that direction. We'll, uh, repeal the old two six eight twenty nineteen and have a copy for first reading next month.
I second.
Sorry.
I second. Ready for roll call?
Sure.
Todd?
Yes.
Danny?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
Erleene?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Paula?
Yes.
Alex, are you saying legally, once this gets changed, we can, uh, we can let that employee go?
I can't hear you cam, sorry.
What you're saying, uh, well, I can, I can ask you later. That's fine. All right. The status of the two oh eight, the marketing Joe for the, for the property, the two oh eight. Jamie put that out there, uh, what we had proposed to her for the sale of that property. I haven't had, I've had a phone call or two. One was to want to advertise it itself as a commercial operator and we're not doing that as a Realtor. Uh, a single now one Realtor to sell that property. Uh, also we, I had a call from another, um, agency that said they might have some prospects there for a hotel and a restaurant. I haven't heard any more back from him. I just, he, he got the information of what we're, what the, you know, what the city is asking for that property. I advised he has to come back before council, present to council if that's the case, they want to purchase that in order to get that zoning changed and agreed upon. That's where we're at. I haven't heard anything more.
So is it, is it officially in a Realtor's hand to try to sell it or is it in our hand?
No, it's in the city's hands. What Jamie did was put that out there for any Realtor to be able to come and bring to the table to counsel what they would like to have there. Any Realtor, if it comes up with somebody to purchase that, they will get six percent of the, uh, of that sale. It, it's not in any one Realtor's hands. It could be for any Realtor to come in and say, hey, we have a buyer for that property. This is what they're wanting to do and we left it like that. So we didn't just have anybody come in. That makes sense?
Yeah. I'm just thinking interest rates are as low as they're probably ever going to get. Now would be a great time for a developer to save some money and jump in and it would really be good if the development office took this as the priority to help us. Even if it's not in a Realtor's hands. Now's the time to sell it. I'd, I'd love to say, let's get it, let's get it sold and get that money into our coffers so that we can do.
It's up for sale. Joe, it's up for sale. Okay? That's been sent out all Northern Kentucky and Grant County. That the, the page that you guys agreed on as far as the price and everything from the last meeting, that's all been taken care of. Jamie put that out there to, uh, Northern Kentucky Development and that should be out into the, uh, the Realtors' hands at this time to see if they can bring somebody to the table to purchase it. So it is for sale. It's up for sale. So you get what I'm saying? It's not at any individual's hands as far as the Realtors.
I understand that. I just, I need to soak on it. I just want to light a fire.
Mayor, uh, I did have on, on top of the code enforcement salary, I wanted to add that fire department funding. Did you get that into the, is that?
Go ahead. I didn't write it down. I'm sorry. Oh, I put that on new business. I'm sorry.
Okay, that's fine.
Anything else for old business that we're not taking care of?
How, how are we, how are we doing on updating the personnel policies?
Is council getting that together?
No, we talked last meeting in March about the updating of the personnel policies because one personnel policy never was allegedly voted on of passing former administration on one job description.
That you made the recommendation, that is council's responsibility to get that together.
Okay. Maybe comment if there are particular personality issues. So we don't run into the same problem kind of ran in with the nuisance code. If people have things that they're really interested in, let me know ahead of time and then I can start working on an overall revision and draft a comprehensive plan. But it'd be good to know kind of what the sticking points are early on so we don't get caught up. I mean, a lot of it's going to be in neutral language. Some of it's going to be very specific. So if there are things that are, that are really important to each of you, just shoot me an email. Let me know your suggestions and I'm happy to incorporate them and embed them in. Maybe vet them with you personally before we propose them to the lot and then maybe that'll be, be able to reach a consensus easier. Just a thought.
Okay, thank you.
And, and if any council that, that starts to get that together, I'd like to have some input on that because I see different needs from my perspective as, as a supervisor. Especially with like probationary, maybe there could be added probationary periods and things like that. As they do in other employments and that way you kind of find what ethic of a person that's taken that job in six, six months or a year. I know Jennifer is familiar with this. You know, you start working for the state, you're on probation, you know? After so long, if you're not doing a good job, you know, you can neither quit or you let go. And, and I think that that needs to be added for future employees as well.
Oh, here you go, everybody. If there's personnel policies and job descriptions that we've talked about in the past that we thought had been passed, it really weren't, uh, put your, put your thoughts together and let's start, uh, let's start sharing and talking and, and get it done.
Yeah, I'd, I'd like to see, uh, everybody either put your two cents worth in by the end of this month and get it to Alex or don't complain about what you get when you, at the first of the month when it's wrote up.
I'm sorry. What, what did you say, Todd? I missed that.
I'd like for all of council to get their two cents worth, what they want in there, what they wanted to read, get it to you by the end of the month. And if they have nothing to input and they can't really complain after the first of the month when they didn't really put any effort into it to what they wanted to see.
Well, we kind of tried that with the nuisance code, right?
Well, yeah, that's what I'm trying to keep from repeating.
It didn't work out so well, but possibly it'd be however you want to open up a form, just to make sure that this is really not so much a community-wide decision. This really needs to be internally amongst you all. So we really don't need to have so many input, maybe necessarily as much as we would in the other cases. But, but definitely I would recommend so we don't get stuck on one or two issues that are really important. Let's vet a few of these maybe and and just roundtable them. Cause I hate to put something together, it upset one person and the whole thing is lost. This is a lot, it's a lot of work.
Can we have one council member, uh,
We tried that.
Contact each individual council member and then that one brings it to you?
Sure, as long as you're not.
Is that legal?
Sure, as long as you, I mean, you guys, you're allowed to talk amongst yourselves. You just can't do it when you, you know, reached a majority or a quorum. So I mean, basically it's.
That one person is going to talk to all five members. And I know you can't.
You can't do that. You can't go around and get everybody's support. The issue is, there's nothing wrong with having some discussions with each other, but you can also do this on the floor. I mean, the next time that we have a meeting, um, you know, you can reserve some time and say, okay, these are the things that I'm really focusing on. And you talk about it openly in the public and so everyone can hear. And then, and then you give me my direction and say, this is what I think is important to me. Cause saying Alex developed a personnel policy, boy, that's a, that's a, that's a red herring. I mean, you know what I mean? Tell me what you're really interested in. We, we're a different city. We only have however many employees we have, which aren't many. So get me there and let me go to work.
Understood.
Now, maybe we need to have, I, I hate having a lot of meetings, but maybe we do, as you said, Alex, have a caucus where we can sit and talk about what, what the things that we wanted. I think that might be the better thing to do, not vote on anything, but talk because there was a particular job description that we thought an individual had, but allegedly it wasn't voted in over twenty years ago. And still working on something that we have no control of from nineteen ninety-nine. So I, I hate meetings. So I'm going to see if we can maybe have a caucus at the end of this month and make sure everybody reads the personnel policies if they have them. Again, to make sure that they have everything and they get the job descriptions of what we're wanting. So, yeah, I'll give you all the input applied. If I don't have support for a caucus meeting to do this, then I'll be quiet.
I, I'd like to schedule a special meeting on the twenty-sixth. That's in my scope to be able to do that.
And, and what do you want to work on? I mean, we got two things now to work on.
Code enforcement will take a lot of time, Todd.
The what it is?
Code enforcement will take quite a bit of time. Uh, which one's more important?
Personnel policies and job descriptions.
I think the personnel would be the first one to hit twenty-sixth.
And why don't we do this, why don't we do this before we call a special meeting? Get me as much information as you can that's relevant and start drafting and putting together some, some things that you guys are requesting. And then we'll know pretty well at the next meeting. You can put this into continued new business and then we can start having some discussion there. And if we didn't have a special meeting, we may have, because we might be closer than you think. Just, just really point out what you, what you think is important. And then work with me, you know, call me and say, Alex, here's the thoughts. Go hunt for it and I'll track it down.
And don't forget, uh, there's a form, Todd. I don't know if you're aware of that you can get, that other council members will have to sign to call that special, special meeting. So.
Where would we, I'm at, man.
We've done it before. Uh, you guys called a special meeting on something. I can't remember what it was, but it's just a form that you sign. And that, that way we can notify the public of the special meeting. What's a special meeting supposed to be about? Unless you just want to have a, uh, I don't know if, if there's no vote, we could just do a caucus.
That's what I was saying. It's just a caucus meeting.
You could do a caucus meeting an hour before the regular meeting. I mean, you could have a caucus so that you're not, you know, you're not, you do, start at six o'clock of a caucus and then go into a seven for the ordinary meeting where you're voting. That's something.
Oh, my gosh. Oh, my gosh. Please don't.
Okay, we'll do it. We can start at ten o'clock.
We have the longest meetings ever.
Oh, no.
Great enough coffee.
Let's, let's see what we get to Alex by the, our next regular meeting. And then if we need to have a special meeting, we'll go sometime in June.
I think that's a good plan. Okay. Yeah, I'll go with you.
And I, I can come down there and meet with a couple too, if you guys want to meet at the, wherever. I don't know what's open, but come down there and just kind of work through it. Whatever works for you guys. And if this is important, let's make it, let's make it a forward.
So we are not doing anything on the twenty-sixth? Is that what I heard? Okay.
Okay.
You guys get with each other and make a decision. Let's move on. Okay? Get with each other and talk. I mean, you, you can talk one on one with each other. All right. Let's move on to the new business with the county road agreement that we have, uh, two eighty-five twenty twenty. Did, uh, Megan, you have that in front of you?
Yes. This is the first reading of ordinance number two eighty-five twenty twenty and ordinance updating the interlocal agreement with the county of Grant addressing cooperative road maintenance between the city of Pritton and the county of Grant. Whereas the city, council of city of Pritton and the physical court of the county of Grant have participated in discussions designed to permit.
have participated in discussions designed to prevent maintenance of the streets in the city by the Grand County Road Department. And whereas the discussions concerned maintenance by the Grand County Road Department have resulted in agreement with which party, with, with each party believes would be beneficial to the parties. And whereas the city of Critten and the county of Grant have mollowed their discussions and agreements in a document style interlocal agreements for cooperative road maintenance, now therefore being obtained by the legislative body of the city of Critten. Section one, the city enters into agreement with the county of Grant as outlined in that document attached here to the style interlocal agreement for county road maintenance. Two, section two, that this mayor of the city of Critten, excuse me, said interlocal agreement, or in on behalf of the city, thereafter, attend to its proper administration. Section three, that all ordinances or portions thereof which may be in conflict with this ordinance shall be, and the same hereby are repealed. This is the first reading of the ordinance. On May the fifth, twenty twenty.
Is there any change to this agreement from last year's?
No.
Was we going to discuss the municipal road aid fund, as far as what we, what we pay into them is how much percent to the, to the fiscal court, how much percent, really based on what we get from municipal road aid fund?
Yeah.
And there has been some deduction because of what's going on with Kentucky and the coronavirus. I, I'll get with Judge, Judge Dills and speak with him, I don't really know for sure what they're going to allow us as far as the road aid fund this year. But do we want to go into that local agreement? It doesn't really say a number here, and Judge Dills and I have the understanding of what has been.
You broke up.
Can you hear me?
I can now.
Judge Dills and fiscal court, you know, we had, I talked with Chuck and we're really, you know, keep it the same. Some years there's more snow removal, some years there's less, you know, it kind of balances out what goes on.
So will you have more idea of, and can report to us next month when we have the second reading?
Yeah, we'll, we'll have a little bit more of what.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to accept it.
Well, it's a first reading, so.
Just a first reading.
First reading. We don't vote.
Oh.
No vote.
Let's see here, let's go down, I, I want to skip the agenda, if that's, if that's okay for you guys, and do the EMS agreement next. Really, there's not an agreement at this time, other than the fact that I spoke with Mayor Brockman and KJ Little, Ken Little, and Rodney Smith, the chief, fire chief of Dry Ridge. We, I had put in the budget, the mayor's budget of eighty-two thousand, I believe, or eighty thousand, I can't remember what that was, but they're still in limbo, the Grand County is going to be the, the first responder and provider for the county as per possibly AMR coming back. That is, that is up to, I think there's some things going on with fiscal court that they may decide countywide ambulance and possible fees to the public, homeowners for property taxes that, that might pay into that. That's where we're at, we really don't have an agreement, other than the fact that I, I, it's Mayor Brockman, that if council passes the eighty-some thousand for the EMS, we want to make sure that that, that is legal from the state, from the state department. And also, no cap on that, excuse me, have a cap on that. For those runs.
Mayor, you came up with the eighty-two thousand?
No. I had a meeting with Greg, excuse me, Mayor Brockman and Fire Chief, they had brought the numbers of what Critten, the runs that Critten was, has made, and it was around a hundred and thirty-five thousand, and all we paid in was forty-seven. They have a, a loss to the EMS agreement. That, 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 we just agreed on a number to, to just put it out there as of eighty-some thousand to the EMS. That, that is up to you guys, what, whether you want to pass that or not. There's still some kinks, there's still some glitches that's going on, there's still things with the county, like I said, with fiscal court and the EMS agreement, so it, it's still in a process. It may be.
I'm sorry.
Somebody have a comment?
I did. I, I'd like to see paperwork proven that, you know, I mean, I'm not doubting Mayor Brockman, don't get me wrong, but I'd like to see more paperwork on like the runs and the addresses and things like that before we approve an eighty-seven thousand or eighty-two thousand, whatever it is, with no cap, or with a cap even.
Well, I have seen some paperwork that Medicare, Medicaid's paid in as far as insurance premiums and things like that, it's around three hundred and something thousand. I've checked into other counties and their budget for ambulance service is around one million or so. AMR has gave a proposal that's an outstanding amount as well. It's something that, that Judge Executive and the mayors will have to get together and, and decide, or the Judge Executive and, or decide whether they want to do county line, countywide ambulance and, and put it, put a fee on the property taxes. It, it's still, it's still up in the air, we really can't, we really can't discuss it a lot tonight because there's, you know, there's not been much discussing on it since we haven't met all together yet.
Is there any way for next month's meeting that we can have all the key players?
I can't hear you. Carolyn, can you?
There we go, let's try that. Is there any way that we could have all the players on the EMS group online, online or in building, if we're capable next month of meeting in the building, but have all the players on here so we could do a question and answer and submit information?
I can request that, we can also, I can talk to Judge Dills to see, see what maybe he has in mind, and the other mayors, and, and see what, what they're thinking of in fiscal court. There's, that's all I can do is, is request, you know, and, yeah.